Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the Board of Education regular scheduled meeting. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
We are.
Will you please call the roll?
Harlan?
Here.
Ellyson?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Olmsted?
Here.
Peshal?
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, and tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Josh Hoffman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is unusual. We're going to adjourn to executive session right away, and then we'll come on back. So for everybody that's here. So I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, Wisconsin statutes 19.851(c) A discussion consideration of employment new superintendent.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Harlan?
Aye.
Harlan, aye. Ellyson?
Aye.
Ellyson, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Peshal?
Aye.
Peshal, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, so we are going to go to the tech room in the back.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll be back.
We hope so.
Yes.
Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
So we're now back in open session. We'll go right back into our schedule. So the first is the Board President's report. I don't have anything to report, so we'll go right into Superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening. Superintendent's good news report for Wednesday, February 28th, 2018. Students and families enjoyed another South Park Middle School annual Friday night frenzy with several in...
It was just too long.
Okay. Okay. Whoops. There we go. Okay. With that included inflatable obstacle course, photo booth, dancing, playing board games, and partaking in raffles. Thanks to all who made this amazing and successful, the South Park community enjoying their school. Emmeline Cook's students wore Cho's Kind shirts in celebration of their 100th day of school and performed kind deeds which were chosen by Cho's Kind Tree, exercise in kindness organization, and it was all done by the fifth grade student council. It's nice to celebrate the days of school as opposed to how many days left. I think that's a... Sixth grade students from Perry Tipler Middle School and the Alps Charter School recently had two opportunities to visit Fox Valley Technical College where they were able to do activities and explore their interest for the future. This month's community service project at Reed Elementary School was focused on kindness. Students wrote compliments on hearts and attached them to the "Take What You Need" wall with all other students for a pic on Valentine's Day. Students in first and third grade at Jefferson Elementary School teamed up with a buddy to work to successfully launch a balloon rocket. Buddies needed to work together to plan, design, and test their balloon rockets, and then modify the original to increase the rocket's launch distance. Students worked through the challenges and remained positive as they faced issues with launches and modifications on their way to obtaining success. Congratulations to Armani and Samara from Carl Trager Elementary School who were the first students to have their work published in the Oshkosh Mabers West magazine showcasing a student working and artwork as it's something new to the magazine, and they would like to be included in their monthly basis. Oakwood Elementary School students had their 2015 Winter Olympic Games, started with an opening ceremony with trivia, daily trivia, and math questions, as well as some indoor Olympic Games. Each classroom did research, created a flag, and represented the country that they participated in, in the Olympics. Congratulations to Oshkosh North High School's counseling team for being named the 2018 School Counseling Team of the Year by the Wisconsin Counseling Association at their February 21st conference. The award recognizes schools counseling team that goes above and beyond what is expected in meeting their personal, academic, and career needs of students. Great job to our counselors at North High School. Congratulations to Larry, Stacy, Gary, and TJ for being recently inducted into the Oshkosh High School and Oshkosh West High School 2017 Athletic Hall of Fame. Elementary learning without limits this month included parent professionals learning about and collaborating about technology during their professional development time. Jefferson Elementary School's fifth grade students used their Chromebooks to present and discuss the progress on the slideshow and during parent-teacher conferences. Just first grade students at Jefferson Elementary celebrated their first 100 days of school and using enhanced photography to get a glimpse of what they might look like at age 100. Now, that's interesting. When you're eight. Boy. Oaklawn students who are part of the Kiwanis Kids, also known as K kids, showed other students that being K kids and what about service. They participated in random acts of kindness, and during their designated K kids week, informed others in their school about the program. Oaklawn students who have reading goals are reaching those goals and become free ticket to the April 27 Timber Rattlers game. Fang, the Timber Rattlers mascot, recently visited Oaklawn students on their Walk to School Day and encouraged students to read and reach out, reach their goals, and while he exercised with them. I met Fang today at Oakwood, and I don't know how he really walks with those big shoes. Friday at Oaklawn Elementary School, Mrs. H's kindergarten class, Free Hug Fridays. Students get high fives and hugs to make the world kind and energized. Mrs. H started the program back in October, and after her hug Fridays caught on with students, loved the day, and find Mrs. H, and even the T-shirts made for them to wear them on Fridays. Communities at Oshkosh North High School. Oshkosh community members brought their projects and their needs to Oshkosh North High School Communities juniors on February 12th and 13th in an effort to partner with students and fulfill the need of a project. The four main focuses were service, awareness, advocacy, and philanthropy. These students are excited to work and to make a difference on their community issues. Franklin Elementary students and families and staff participated in all school community reading event with hands-on and informational activities, all centered on all around the book, The One and Only Ivan. Students at STEM Academy, at Shapiro STEM Academy, experienced the virtual field trips to Space Station, the Olympics, the solar system, and the underwater coral reefs. Shapiro recently held its family night where everyone enjoyed some books, learned about mindfulness, listened to the story, Only One You, and created rock characters, thanks to all who made this possible, including Pick 'n Save and Starbucks for their generous donations. And thanks to the local SOR and PTO groups for their financial support. Shapiro students were able to participate in the Opera for the Young and enjoyed an artistic experience. Some fifth graders at Washington Elementary Schools spread kindness throughout the school by forming two groups to work on uplifting projects. One group worked on making Valentine hearts and were distributed to each student, while the second group made posters and positive quotes and hung them throughout the school. Would take a moment for the video of Washington Elementary School, first grade students using Flight Grid to record themselves and finding a Peggy and Gerald book.
My dog ate my homework.
I couldn't help it.
I love this guy.
I was hungry.
But, but she likes it.
It slipped.
But Dan says it.
Excuse me.
No, it was, it wasn't me.
Yes, it was me.
I'm sorry.
Love you, Mom.
Peace.
I'm sure we're not probably going to go through all of them.
We're not going through all of them. I wish I could, no.
Far more entertaining than the Superintendent's good news report. Thank you. Spirit Week at Roosevelt School. Students at Roosevelt Elementary School participated in Spirit Week, which consisted of several themed dress-up days, of which included Olympic Day, Fancy Pants Day, Mismatch Crazy Day, and Crazy Clothes Day. So you can see some examples of that. Classes at Carl Trager Middle School competed against each other, wearing the most red in the red-out day on February 14th, supported the American Heart Association efforts promoted healthy hearts. And on February 27th, just yesterday, Roosevelt Elementary honored one of its staff members, Kelly Deff, and who passed away last February. On memorial bench was placed in the school in memory of Kelly, and many of her contributions to the school and to students, the parents and PTO member, as well as a staff member, and that included giving advice to the superintendent in our worst of times. Kelly was just fabulous, and we really celebrated that bench. It was on the stage in the gymnasium during the program, and Dr. Herzog was able to attend with us and to celebrate that and after that event, our principal and I had a chance to enjoy the new bench in the hallway. That is a wonderful memorial to Kelly. That completes the Superintendent's report, with the exception of the activities in the last very short week period that exists because of compression of board meetings. With that, I would complete the Superintendent's report. Do you wish for me to respond on the issue of listening hour from last?
Yep, that's next.
Yes. Next would be last time we had listening hour guests, we had four guests who came and talked to us about the whole issue and left us lots of material and for the entire board on sex trafficking, particularly focusing in on young children of age eight to 14 in the Fox Valley, and providing information for us to become alert to the issues of sex trafficking. They ask of us to make sure that we communicate information to our health teachers, counselors, social workers, and all teachers, but particularly those who work directly with our adolescents on the dangers of sex trafficking. And the information they provided for us was very informative. I had not realized the extent of that issue in society. So we will be doing that and making sure that all individuals are informed and that we try to assist with our middle school especially and high school students. We also had one parent who was in who had concerns about our calendar, and it particularly was focused on that we should have less days and/or smaller days, feeling that particularly at the primary age level, the days are too long for, at least for her child, and she'd like to see an increase in recess time, and both in half-day kindergarten and 5K option, hoping that we would potentially look at having elective half-day kindergarten like it used to be. That's really different than what most states around the country and most everywhere is going to full-day kindergarten and 4K half-day as we presently have. But her interest of her child was to look at that being shorter than for the length of day. So that completes, we'll certainly take that under advisement. I think we would have on that latter issue particularly strong objection to shortening days or maybe recess would be popular, but length of school year would not be. That completes the Superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Are there any other reports from committee chairs?
Can I ask a question related to the listening session? Do we keep minutes on those or not?
Yes.
Because I could not find them.
Okay. Not sure if we collect notes on those particularly, and we can make sure that they're available for Board.
Yeah, they're out there somewhere.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Are there any reports from committee chairs? It's been such a busy... Okay, great. So now, we have a non-agenda related public forum. Let's see, is there anybody here that would like to address the board? Yeah, come on up.
Should we sit?
Yeah, come on up here. And each of you, if you'll just state your name and your mailing address, and then you can address the board. And this is not conversational, so we can't answer questions. We can just...
No challenge.
It is nice to have someone do this. We seldom have...
This is very exciting. All right. So my name is Tracy Robertson. I live at 1334 CP Avenue in Oshkosh.
Should they say?
Yep.
My name is Ivy Neese. Should I say my address?
Yes.
Okay. I am from 427 North Clark Street.
I'm Trinity LaFlore. I'm from 821 North Sawyer Street.
Okay. So I am the co-founder and executive director of a nonprofit organization here in Oshkosh, Wisconsin called Fit Oshkosh, and our mission is to increase racial literacy in the community. We do that through a number of vehicles. We do it through education, research, advocacy, and training. And so basically, our organization is really here to dismantle racism in all the systems where we see it. And last year, we received a pretty significant grant, a three-year grant, from an organization called End Abuse Wisconsin, and we're using that grant to do some healthy relationship training in the Oshkosh area school district. And I'm sure people are wondering, what does race have to do with healthy relationships? What we know for certain is that people of color are disenfranchised in the system of domestic violence, and so we really wanted to be talking about that in schools. Our plan for it is to work with student advocates to have those high school students teach middle school students some strategies for healthy dating. Last month, our students, now, we're working exclusively right now with students from West High School, and our plan is that they will do a couple of things. One will be is they will go into middle schools and teach healthy, a 14, 18-week domestic violence curriculum, healthy relationships curriculum to middle schoolers. They will also offer an online component of their lesson so that parents, domestic abuse allies, law enforcement can tap into that learning as well. So last month, our students went to a statewide teen summit where they had an opportunity to participate in teen-led workshops to help them get some skills around these conversations. I want to say that I've gotten phone calls from people all over the state talking about how impressed they were specifically with our West High School student ala advocates. And the students were really excited to talk about what they experienced at the teen summit. So I brought them here today to talk with the school board about what they learned and what they're excited about as we move forward in this project. So, do you want to start?
All right. So I guess I should probably first talk about a little bit what we learned. So we got there, and there was, actually, I'm not sure what day it was, but they had this speaker named Beverly Gooden, and she presented to us about relationship violence and just relationship abuse, I guess. And it was, gosh, it was amazing. And I just learned so much from that. And then, like, the rest of the day, we had these teen-led workshops that she talked about, where other teenagers from different schools or representatives of certain clubs and organizations taught us about certain aspects of healthy relationships and, I don't know, do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, like Beverly Gooden, she came in, she talked about her story, how she got out of her domestic abusive relationship. She also had a very famous hashtag or hashtag on Twitter, it was trending, it's called Why Stayed, and it's about her domestic abusive relationship too. And that went viral also because other people could relate to it. So I thought that was really touching to see that, like, she wasn't, she realized she wasn't the only one suffering through what she was going through, and a bunch of other people all over the world was also suffering too.
The experience overall was very eye-opening because Oshkosh isn't very diverse, I would say. So it's interesting for kids living in Oshkosh their whole lives to go somewhere where it's very diverse and see lots of different types of people, and like, us all come together and work together to try to end abuse and discrimination, and it was awesome.
And we're a part of the Stride Group at our school.
Students teaching racial literacy, diversity, and equity.
And we heard about this teen summit through them then, and I became, I decided to become a student advocate for this too, because I feel like it's important for, especially like, middle schoolers to see people who are not too much older than them trying to make a change, and they can realize that they can make a change also. I think that was a lesson that we also learned during the teen summit, that especially at our age, we can definitely make a change, and if we want to make a change, we should start now.
Yeah. Well, I decided to become a student advocate for exactly what Trinity said. I think it's super important, especially for kids living in a city like Oshkosh, to open their eyes to see that no matter how small you are, you can make a change, and the world can be a better place if we really try, because the generational advocacy, it starts with us. It starts with the kids who are old enough to have a voice and teach the other kids who maybe aren't old enough for their voices to be heard, that their voices can be heard.
Yeah, definitely. And something I'd like to take away while teaching, or after teaching these middle schoolers, I'd like to see their perspectives at the moment, because right now, I know, like, what a sophomores, what our Stride Group thinks about all this, and we want to make change. But we want to see, like, what these middle schoolers, who even though they might be a few years younger than us, they might have a different point of view also. I'd like to maybe hopefully change their perspectives on what they're going to, or inform them about the things that are going on, because they may not know what's going on, because in Oshkosh or in their schooling system, they may not talk about it as much as our specific group in school does.
Yeah, we definitely live in a world where things aren't talked about as much as they should. It's definitely getting better, but I think teaching, at least my generation, to talk about it will teach everyone to talk about the issues that are affecting us specifically.
And even in my English class recently, we were talking about how it's almost un-American to not go out and test your own beliefs and challenge your own beliefs, because in America, we're preached all the time in school and stuff. To learn about these new cultures, to accept these new people, their lifestyles, and to not, like, teach other people about it or learn it yourselves is almost un-American, as we said.
Really.
I'm hoping to impact this community later on, that these kids can, maybe they'll become high schoolers, become a student advocate too. Maybe they'll take the information we share with them, they'll understand it now, they'll use it now, or maybe in the future, they'll realize, like, wow, like, this information was really important, it's helped me through this and this, and, yeah.
I don't know. The teen summit definitely, like I said earlier, opened my eyes to a lot, and if we could get more kids to participate in things such as that, it's a person like me who's not very, I don't know how to say it, like, experienced in other cultures and other ways of life, like, for younger kids to be able to see that is super exciting, and I just want to share them, like, tell them everything that I saw at that teen summit. It was so cool.
Yeah, and it wasn't just, like, what the speakers have shared with us. Us as a group had a talk later in the night about races and their own personal problems, and I thought even just us getting together and us group, we didn't know each other very well. Some of us had good friends in the group, but we didn't know each other very well. But we got together, sat down, had a personal talk, and even then, it opened my eyes up that, like, I need to learn about these new cultures, learn about these people who aren't just like shells of people, they have much more going on within them, and that can be shaped through their culture or just their personal lives.
Yeah, it was definitely a bonding experience, and it made me feel a lot closer to the people I thought I wouldn't be closer to, not even just the group that I went with, but just knowing that we can all stick together and work together to see change in our community and around the world. I just think it's really interesting to learn that, I guess.
Thank you.
I have so many questions.
I know. Don't you wish? Yes. Well, we really appreciate you guys bringing that information to us. We always love learning about things, so this was really, it was powerful for me, listening to you guys talk about helping younger kids as well as working with each other. Love it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
I think your content is great. I think your delivery was just outstanding.
Yes.
Trust and confidence in coming here, we oftentimes don't see that fortitude in coming before the board. Thank you. Even sometimes with the board itself.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on non-agenda related public forum? Or the agenda-related public forum? Okay. Then we'll get right into the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. 12?
I'd ask for 12B, please.
12B, anything else?
13, please.
Okay. All right, here we go. The board will consider approval of: 1, minutes of January 24, 2018, regular board meeting; 2, minutes of February 5, 2018, executive session; at special board meeting; 3, minutes of February 12, 2018, executive session at special board meeting; 4, minutes of February 13, 2018, executive session at special board meeting; 5, minutes of February 14, 2018, regular board meeting; 6, minutes of February 14, 2018, executive session at regular board meeting; 7, minutes of February 15, 2018, executive session at special board meeting; 8, minutes of February 20, 2018, executive session at special board meeting; 9, minutes of February 21, 2018, executive session at special board meeting; 10, minutes of February 22, 2018, executive session at special board meeting. We were really busy. 11, bills payable; 12, personnel; A, appointments, resignations, and salary schedules; C, resignations of administrators.
So moved. Second?
Call the roll.
Peshal?
Aye.
Peshal, aye. Harlan?
Aye.
Harlan, aye. Ellyson?
Aye.
Ellyson, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Peshal?
Aye.
Peshal, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, resolution 13. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve 2018-19 school calendar as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Second?
Okay, discussion?
Yes. Mrs. Garner, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank Sandy Holnagle, who's been a math teacher in the Oshkosh area school district since 1985. She has announced her retirement, and we certainly wish her well in her next chapter of life.
Thank you, Barb. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Harlan?
Aye.
Harlan, aye. Ellyson?
Aye.
Ellyson, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Peshal?
Aye.
Peshal, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, resolution 13. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve 2018-19 school calendar as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Second?
Okay, discussion?
Sure. First off, I wanted to thank Tim and Julie and the Calendar Committee for putting together the calendar this year.
Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, resolution thirteen, be resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve 2018-19 school calendar as filed with the secretary to the board of education.
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion?
Sure. First off, I wanted to thank Tim and Julie and the calendar committee for putting together the calendar this year. I know there were some things that, over the last year, that you guys had worked out, and some of those things are in here. That's great to see that progress. I'm bringing this up because I want to highlight that, you know, next year's calendar, we're looking to have the kids be out of school for Martin Luther King Day, which I think is a great step in the right direction. And I hope that our community follows that direction as well. So my, I wanted to make sure that, as we move forward, that we also try to extend that to our staff and our administration, and so that our community can lead, can follow by our, by our lead, by our example in that. And we've had discussions about how that works and how that doesn't work this year, and I'm not going to push that this year. But my hope is that we, as a board, can do a couple of different things, and as the calendar committee can continue to do what they do. I don't know that I have any questions for you guys, so. My questions, I think, are really relate to the process in regards to district holidays, and how we, as a board, approve those or make those part of our policies as our students and our staff have off. I think it would make it easier for you guys. On one end, we'd start to find instructional hours and the professional development.
On one side, but we still have to find time for the people to do record-keeping at that time, because that is, that is the end of quarter of the semester.
That is the end of the semester.
And that's why we absolutely have to have record-keeping at that time. So that's the, that's the difficulty.
I understand. And my side of this is looking at it from the perspective is that our community should be, our staff, our students should be able to outrightly celebrate Martin Luther King Day without having to worry about the work that they have to do and stuff like that. You know, and so I guess the path that I'm looking for is, is that we, as a board, I, you know, I can, I can create a resolution where it states that we have these certain holidays or certain days are off in a year. I couldn't find anything that states such as that. So if there is an actual policy that states that there are certain days other than what's regulated by the state and the federal government, my series typing what I'm saying. I guess I would like to, you know, have us author a resolution that states that Martin Luther King is a day off of school for students as well as district employees.
So may I ask a clarifying question? So, Mr. Peschel, when you're talking about that, are you looking at that as, like, a paid holiday? Or are we looking at it as just a non-school day? Because paid holidays, depending on the group, is inside our employee handbook, and so it lists specifically what the paid holidays are throughout the school year. So there's a difference between ensuring that it's a non-school day for students and for staff versus a paid holiday. So I think that would be a discussion that the board would need to have, is what would be their, what would be their preference, or what direction would you like to go in for that?
It does become then a budgetary issue because we can certainly extend the length of the year for, as a non-working day for teachers. But the issue is for hourly employees, is it, is it day without pay? Or is it, because it doesn't change, because we would include teacher's work year as a fixed number of days? And we have also the obligation for educating students for X number of days and hours. But I would encourage you to be very careful, study to deal with that, because we work very carefully on not causing increased costs. And that, that would have an increased cost, or we simply tell people, you're just not paid for that day. And we want to be careful with that.
Can I make a suggestion? Would you like to have that addressed as a future agenda, as a future agenda item? Okay.
And I should note the fact that we're being very progressive from my checking with area school districts, with the exception of Appleton, which I believe operates on the same as we are, with students off but staff development day.
Correct.
There are no Fox Valley school districts that have off for Martin Luther King Day. They all have school. And so we're, we're identical to our closest sister large school district in the fact that it is a, it is a work day and is treated as a work day for teachers, as a workshop day.
I guess my goal, I mean, Stan is to, is to make Oshkosh even more progressive than what, than what we have existing throughout the Fox Valley. In my mind, it's, it's that important, and it's a message, it's a message that we send to our community. That's, that's really important as well. I understand, and we've got things to work out on that. But I guess, I want, I wanted this to be said so that as we go forward, in the future of building the calendar, if we're going to create a policy around this, that we kind of have this kind of out there. All right? So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the 2018-19 calendar? Yes, thank you. The community came out, they asked, and we delivered, so, well done. Thank you so much. Okay, so we have to vote on it, don't we? All right, so please call the roll.
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Now we go into the individually considered resolution, number fourteen. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the appointment of Vicky Cartwright as superintendent as filed with the secretary to the board of education on February 28, 2018, in accordance with the rules, regulations, and policies of the board of education.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Yeah, who wants to go first?
I am very pleased with our appointment of Vicky Cartwright, Dr. Vicky Cartwright, to become our next superintendent. When interviewing her and when looking at the documents and the supporting information that she provided us, I knew that she was the right fit for, for our community. She is tireless, from everything that I've seen about her. She is exciting. She is excited about kids and excited about improving people's, our community's education. So I have no doubt that she will do a great job leading us, following in Stan's footsteps. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
I would just like to reiterate what Barb said. I am so excited about having Dr. Cartwright join our district. I would also like to thank the community for those who participated in the process, both formally and informally. The feedback that we received from our community members was invaluable, and we really took everything that everyone said to heart. Every candidate told us how welcoming our community was and how nice we all are, and I think that's a reflection on how much we care about our schools. So thank you to everyone that hosted our candidates. I would also like to say thank you to Dr. Williams and Dr. Onsager for spending the day with us. It was a long day, and it was a rigorous process, and they both held up very well. And I have no doubt that they will be successful in other districts, and I wish them well. In the end, it just came down to Dr. Cartwright being a good fit for our community. And I truly believe that moving forward, that she's going to do great things for our district. And somewhere in there, there is a joke about our Florida candidate coming on an ice storm there. I don't know what that joke is yet, but...
We'll get there.
She did come during our ice storm, and she knows what she's getting into. And I'm excited.
Yeah, it goes without saying, and I'm also excited for her to, to take the baton from Stan and run her leg of the race. Oh, that was good.
Same thing, yes.
But I also want to thank this board, because we spent a lot of time, a lot of hours, lost a lot of sleep, and I think we came through it stronger as a board, so.
Agreed.
Hats off to everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I, I think that we heard from the community loud and clear that what, what we've done with Stan in the last six years has been to take a district that was not doing real well and stabilize and start to build the trust and, and get our community behind us again, and believing in us and believing in our kids. And so I think it's because of that work that we got such outstanding candidates, and it was, it was a good pool. Boy, I mean, we, it was a very difficult decision. The three finalists, I mean, they, they floated to the surface. They, they are, they were so far, they were just really terrific candidates. And even at the end, it was, it was a difficult decision. I can't say enough about how excited I am to have Vicky in our district, and I just, I can't wait to get started. So, thanks.
You haven't left much to be said.
Sorry.
That's okay. Input from the community from the very beginning, going back to, I believe it was September, October, where people told us things that they wanted to build on in terms of the legacies, that legacy that Stan will have left us, and looking for somebody to take us to the next level. And one of those levels or one of those areas that we looked to work on was closing the achievement gap so that we are educating all children, all means all. And Dr. Cartwright certainly stated that numerous times. She was most excited when she was spending time with children in our district. She puts children first, holds people accountable, has an impeccable character, very, very excited and enthusiastic, and has a tremendous background in evaluation of data so that we can move forward as a district and make sure that we're not leaving any students behind. So Stan leaves with big shoes to fill, but we think that Vicky, Vicky is the one who will be able to do that.
I, with all of my other board members, I am extremely excited and so happy to have Vicky come to the, to our district. I believe her energy and her unbelievable knowledge base is going to just do wonders here. And during, spending the day with her and the other candidates, I thank all of them. It was a very long, long day for all of them and coming up here a few times. I, I would say that when going through all of the impression sheets, the impression sheets that we got back from Vicky were undeniably outstanding. There was quite a few who said, there was a lot of in there about Stan and about how great of a job he's done. And there was even one in there that she mirrors Stan. And that was a big one, you know, for all of us, that she'll be the right fit, that we, we don't want to, you know, go back on any of the work that we've done, we want to move forward. And I think she, she can do that, and she's excited. And she had nothing but great, great praises to say about the executive team and all of our community members and the kids and Stan, so she's just as excited to come as, as we are to have her.
I remember sharing at the outset of the process that I had hoped that we could take this great progress that we've made in these last years with Stan and just keep right on, right on upwards with that process. And I feel like we, those things will be realized. And I have to thank the wisdom and the wise counsel of our, of our firm and our board and our community and everybody who's involved, that somehow the wisdom of crowds or the wisdom of select crowds, or the wisdom of wise people is very good, let's put it that way. And I'm really excited about it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, resolution fifteen, be resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the administrative employment agreement for the superintendent as filed with the secretary to the board of education on February 28, 2018, in accordance with the rules, regulations, and policies of the board of education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I think it's important to note that Dr. Cartwright is so eager to, to join us here that she's looking to join, to come up to the district for a full week at the end of May and then a full week at the end of June before her contract would officially begin so that she can have time to work with Stan and make for a smooth transition within the district for, for the benefit of our students and our staff.
I was hoping for that in, in the follow-up conversation the day after Vicky's interview. She followed up with a call to me, kind of asking for a review of how we experienced her and really extending the issue of trying to find the most effective way of dealing this transition. And, and I think those weeks will be just great to work together and to convey what we've done and, and giving her a starting block to move from. One, one piece, we always talk about big shoes to fill, she does not wear size 12. It's not something that she should be according with, so she'll do fine without size 12.
But I think it might also be worth noting that there was a precedent perhaps established when you came on board with the boat ride, so.
Yeah, we have to.
Have to make sure that she gets very wet.
Yeah.
Wait for a warmer time.
Yeah, exactly. Any, any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, so, request for future agenda items. So we have paid holidays. Are there, are there any others? Okay. Announcements?
Just one announcement. We do have on a futures agenda to have our annual board evaluation. And so if you haven't had a chance yet to put your data into the Wisconsin Association of School Boards survey system, please do that as soon as possible so that we can make sure that we have data from everybody, because it's really important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barb.